Let's call the meeting to order and with the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, everybody. I haven't heard from Carol, but I I'm sure she'll pick up and join us in a little while. Do we have anybody in the public session wanting to come in, Bill? No, all right. Any correspondence, Stefan?
No.
Okay, we'll go right into the minutes. Has everyone had a chance to look over the minutes? Are there any changes or anything? Yes, Nancy?
Um, I don't know if this is technically a minute, part of the minutes, but the last line on page three, it's the wrong date for our next meeting. It should be the ninth instead of the eighth, just for the record, if 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 you care.
Well, sure, January ninth. I don't know if this for the minutes, though.
No, but
it's just for us, but we should all know it'll be.
December ninth, that's tonight.
That's right, that's tonight. And so the next meeting will be on the thirteenth? I don't know. I think that's what it is, January thirteen.
January thirteenth.
Right, okay.
Yes, correct. They probably just use the minutes from last or the agenda from last year, the last month, yeah.
That's what we did, right. And I didn't even go down that far to take a look at it.
That's all right.
Well, if everybody, if everybody has reviewed the minutes, may I have, do we have to vote motion, right? And motion to approve the minutes?
I make a motion.
All right, who seconds?
I'll second it.
Nancy and Joan?
Yep.
Okay, all those in favor? Hi, anyone opposed? No, any extensions?
Me, Mary, I wasn't there.
And Julia, right?
There's Carol.
Okay, I'm just gonna shut that off. I'm sorry.
Hi, Carol.
Hi.
How are you?
Good, hi, guys.
Hi, Carol.
Hi.
Carol, we just approved the minutes.
I I saw that I was on.
Oh, you were on, okay.
For some reason, my laptop is kind of.
I like the background there. Where are you want to be?
That's in Bilbao, Spain.
Oh, lovely.
It's really nice there.
Very nice. Okay, Stefan, you want to give us the director's report? You sent us that as well.
Yes, so as you all are aware, we went back to curbside last week on Wednesday. Was a smooth transition, you know, we had been running the same hours that we were from before, and it was simply a matter of, you know, we didn't have to rearrange staff or anything of that nature. So to that end, it was very good. I will say, you know, it's been disappointing in the sense that the the staff actually were kind of getting used to and enthusiastic about having patrons in the library again. But obviously, with, you know, infection rates going up, it probably makes sense to scale back service. We are, you know, it 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 has been. Yeah, I was, I was thinking we were going to get a bit of a reprieve before the the holds were going to rack up again, but we're already back up to two hundred and fifty, three hundred holds outside the building. And without, and Louis was a, he had an appointment this morning, so it was just me putting them all out. So that was actually quite interesting. But yes, people are still using the library, so I guess that's a good thing. Our 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 hope is that once we're given the go ahead, we will go back to implementing not just reopening the library, but also implementing Saturdays and the Fairchild branch at the same time. In the meantime, the library has taken the opportunity to get some projects done that we've been working on. We have been doing a shift of the nonfiction section. And that's a kind of a huge undertaking, but it's since there's nobody in the building, it makes it a whole lot easier. And our goal is to have more space for the teen area to grow and make it more modern. Now, there there's, there's still a lot of antiquated collection choices that we're correcting as we go. And in regards to the type of materials that we carry, especially in the nonfiction section, that's sort of, you know, either out of date or we we no longer need to have it because, you know, there's this wonderful thing called the internet and and other things that sort of make other choices obsolete. So it's giving us an opportunity to really kind of think about things. And, you know, in addition to that, we're also changing some of the processes. In the report, I I talk about how we, you know, changed that and like we are doing the 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 holds process. There's some technical improvements that we've made so that we can speed it up considerably and not have to, you know, write everything by hand. Instead, the receipt automatically prints out exactly what we needed to say right up at the top. So, you know, it's, it's one of those things where it probably saves you maybe fifteen to thirty seconds when you're doing a hold. But when you're processing as many books and materials, you know, that that we do in a day, it it does add up and we do, we do make a good turnaround on that. In addition to that, we are having the programmers. We're, we've been meeting regularly for the last few months. And trying to figure out, you know, where to invest our money and our time. Our online craft programs have been particularly very popular. So we've started to expand on that. In addition to not just doing one offs, but actually doing multiple sets of the same program, partly because these craft programs usually can only accommodate up to twenty, twenty individuals or so. But we're finding that we quickly run out of spots. So we've actually been doing duplicate number of programs in the last few, about in the last month in order to try and, you know, get everybody the opportunity to go to these programs. And, you know, we we're finding that those craft type programs work very well. We've also had some success with resume workshops, other sort of job hunting type programs that, you know, given the atmosphere, the economy at the moment, that's been a of interest to our patrons. You know, aside from that, I'm meeting again with them next week. The programming staff, they're, they're, they're looking at doing something that some of the other libraries and in Fairfield have done, which is, you know, try and formulate programming around a single theme on a quarterly basis. And then put out a publication every quarter, so you'd have like a spring sort of catalog or summer catalog that you'll put out. They'll have all the programs listed for that three month period of time. And the nice thing about it is, is that it kind of, you know, makes it easier for patrons to, you know, find in, you know, programs that they're interested in, they can sign up for them. But it also makes it so that the library is much more coordinated in terms of, you know, programming and events. Hopefully making it so that it's, you know, such a good showcase of the type of programs and there's more communication among the staff in regards to what it is that we have got going on. And, you know, I think it's a good exercise, not only for for us, you know, just doing it on a regular basis, but also for some of our bigger projects that, you know, once, once we are back to normal and doing in person programming, we can use these in order to apply to things like the One Book One Town program or the Summer Reading Program. That's pretty much it.
Stefan, I just had a question about where are we in the budget process? I lost that. You presented.
Budget is due next month.
Oh, next month.
Yes. And I have not heard anything yet from the people up above. Usually they send us some information. But as, you know, in regards to the budget, we are looking at it from perspective that, you know, we're expecting that they're going to want us to go back to Sunday hours. And so that will be part of the proposal. And, you know, having enough staff for the full time service of what we had before we we had going into this. Essentially, the budget is going to look very similar to the one that I presented last January. And it will be, you know, on on the administrative side in order to figure out, you know, for them as to what is feasible at this point in time. You know, I don't know. You know, there's, there's obviously more detail than that. Then there's, you know, separate projects that were put on hold as a result of COVID and, you know, budgetary decisions that came into play before the financial year started. For instance, we had money in there for video cameras in inside the building. Some of these things, you know, I still think are a good idea to have. The question is, you know, is that worth Sunday hours or not? You know, we're going to have to make some choices, but, you know, at the end of the day, this is going to really be about, you know, the library putting forth, you know, the best vision of, you know, the experience that the patrons had before COVID happened. And then, you know, figuring out how to make that work.
Okay, any other questions for Stefan?
Stefan, have have you heard anything about whether the people, the powers that be are at all considering any, any of the plans that were in going on before COVID occurred? In other words, library renovation and all that kind of thing. Has anybody said anything about that, or is that just off the table?
I I can't tell you. My, nobody has said anything to me at all in that regard. You know, I assume that, you know, they they haven't forgotten it, but at the same time, you know, they they have certainly more pressing concerns at the moment.
Right.
I think I said it two meetings ago. I think I said I was told that, you know, everything's tabled for right now.
We did.
You know, with unemployment, the economy with COVID, you know, everything is just on hold.
I don't think that the town really knows what the fiscal scenario is. You know, as I said, you know, when it comes to our budget, I'm going to try and present it in the best light possible as what it is that, you know, people want to experience. But at the end of the day, you know, a lot of this is going to be made, you know, at that, you know, senior level where they're looking at, you know, tax returns and things of that nature. I don't know exactly what that's going to feel like. Hopefully, it's going to be good.
Okay, any other questions for Stefan? All right, thank you. John?
Yeah.
Do the treasurer's report?
Well, during December, the board received the distributions that are made annually to its three trust funds, namely the the Holy, the Merwin, and the Mallet. And the total we received is unfortunately seven percent higher than we received on average over the last three years. The amount of money's received this last month is thirty-two thousand nine hundred and twenty-six dollars. There's additional income to the to the board, and this was derived from a memorial contribution of five hundred dollars. Relative to the disbursements of obviously, they're they're somewhat restricted. But nonetheless, there were book purchases made with the Holy Fund for four hundred dollars. And there's a small program expense to the paid for by the Merwin Fund of about a hundred and forty dollars. And we have our monthly rental fee for the dumpster of a hundred and ten dollars, which we we take as have we done before from the book sale income line. That's pretty much the end of report. At the end of this month, the bound, the balance for board funds stands at about a hundred and twenty, a hundred and twenty-six thousand dollars, which is very, very favorable for us right now. So, thank you. That's the report.
Thank you, John. Any other questions for John? No? Okay, Fairchild, Nancy, Mary, anything happen there?
Um, Mary, were you at the last meeting? I can't remember.
Yes, I was at the last meeting.
Okay, so let's put our heads together. What I recall specifically is that our manage managing person said she's really busy with trying to develop some of these craft programs that Stefan talked about.
Yep.
There's a lot of reception for a lot of interest in those people. And that she's doing these online. But people stop by to pick up like the supplies ahead of time, and then they conduct the whole thing online, which is pretty interesting. And she's doing a number of other programs for kids and trying to make the best of the situation. And I think it's going pretty well, right?
She was very positive, especially about the programming. She also talked about not just the craft program, but there was also talk about possibly providing cartooning and music programs. Stefan, am I correct on that? Upcoming cartooning and music programs?
Sorry, I managed to mute myself. Yes. They they are planning on, you know, the, I don't know much about the music programs, but the cartooning programs, yes, she had somebody in mind that she was going to work with in order to deliver those. There there are certainly plenty of music acts for children that have been very popular in regards to online programming. But I I I'd have to have more information from her in regards to what she was thinking about.
And you know, something else she mentioned was kind of like what you mentioned, Stefan, about, you know, having the time to clean things out. She was looking at better shelving for graphic novels and trying to, you know, reorganize libraries.
Working at the main library, helping with the all the the requests for books. And she's, and the books from the Fairchild are also books that are being used for the whole town, not just for Fairchild. In other words, when people request a title, it could come from either library. And as I understand it, she's had a number of people who are just community residents who like to, you know, the the programming isn't just for Fairfield people, as I understand it, that.
Yeah, there's no way for us to, you know, separate that.
Yeah, so it's kind of whoever is interested in online stuff can do it from whichever library they see programs they like, right?
Would we ever think, I know we have done a lot of surveys, but would we ever think about doing a limited survey right now online about what people would like this winter? I'm just thinking about, it's going to be such a hard winter, it sounds like. And there may be things we, you know, I don't know.
You mean the interest that people would have for programming?
That's always a hard, you know. It's a, like, we can certainly do something like that, but I will say, you know, it's the problem with it, it's usually very open ended, and you don't know exactly what it is that people kind of are thinking of when you say, are you interested in a music program? You know, like, there's, there's like, you know, build your own ukulele and learn how to play. And then there's, you know, like a piano recital or something of that nature. You know.
Maybe you might see patterns if you had some open ended. I'm just thinking, I keep hearing about people falling into depression and, you know, some really serious things. And I I do think belonging and being part of a community helps, and that's one of the great functions of our library.
Yeah. No, we will.
Is programming that there's part, they're planning like three month things? I mean, I think that that could, I think that's a great way of getting people involved, you know? And then maybe leading to a more like the One Book One Town. I mean, to find those are almost little interest questions too. Who who responds to what and how people respond to those three or every quarter program is is an interesting thing. You know, maybe they'll do surveys as part of that too, with a group, who knows?
Well, if you're, if you're thinking of of putting something like a catalog or a brochure or something out with prospective programming that you're thinking of for the next few months, you can add a question on there for them to respond to what interests you.
Right.
Kind of thing. And that's, and that's great. It opens up our eyes too as to what the community would would be looking for.
Right.
I don't know how far you're going with that, that the thought of the brochure or whatever, or getting out of advanced notice as to what kinds of things you're going to be having down the line.
No, no, that's a, that is a good idea, especially at the moment, right? You know, if we're planning these themes for programming in the long run, we should have an idea of what it is that we can can work with. Yeah.
Kelly?
A good person to talk to might be Cheryl Gould, who does the adult ed through the Trumbull High School. I've seen they, you know, they usually put out a catalog of of classes that you could take at the high school for adults a couple of times a year. And there would be things like classes on angels and classes on blog writing and classes on social media for your business. And I just wonder if there's any cross, you know, there might be some cross interest there where she might either have some sources that might be good for you. Because you see, I see popping up in my Facebook feed a lot like a virtual tour of Venice. And and, you know, I see, oh, some of my friends are have indicated interest in it, and I'm like, what's this? And it just turns out that it's some online virtual tour of Venice or virtual tour of the, you know, the New York, you know, art museum or something like that. So those, because I think to your points, Stefan, people don't know what they want until you say, do you want this?
Just thinking, I mean, just thinking about things like a speaker on how to help your friends and family in January or what what to do for Christmas.
Winter blues.
Speakers, yeah.
Even tips for like paying off your holiday bills or, you know, things like that. It's really a good idea.
New Year's resolutions.
That's right. Okay, well, anything else from Fairchild? No, thank you.
Let's just go back to what Kelly was saying for a second and Julia. So Stefan, what really it sounds like what they're talking about is collaboration, right? Because instead of having our own channel of something new, there are existing channels that we can kind of tap into. So what do you think about that?
We 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 were working with the Stratford Trumbull Continuing Education Department. They actually were coming. We we had them come in for one program last year. And they had been coming into the actual library to sign people up for a continuing education program. So we were, we we had started having conversations with them. And then, of course, February happened and everything went out the door, or actually March happened. But, yeah, no, I I we can certainly look into reaching out and seeing what we can do in regards to connecting again. That that hasn't been a, hey, hey, like, trying to, or like coordinate with other programs. I should say, you know, the the only group that we've really reached out to, and that has been the ARP, because we're trying to figure out what's going on with tax season coming up in January and February. And, you know, trying to figure out how they are going to be delivering those services and what we can do in order to coordinate with them. You know, it it it's we we would like to be in a better position for a lot of this stuff. That's, that's our biggest problem. You know, everything is very chaotic and, you know, trying to just do the things that we're doing on our own is tough. But then trying to deal with somebody else's chaos is doubly tough. But that said, yes, we we should definitely connect with, you know, Cheryl Gould and figure out what it is that they're doing on their end and seeing what where we can match up or pair up or see what those interests are to figure out where we can provide services to the patrons.
I mean, I I think part of what Carol's talking about too is that we can take on some of that responsibility too as your board. Cheryl's actually my sister in law's mother, so I'm very, very close to her. So it would be real easy for me to to kind of partner with her or have that conversation. Another thing that just kind of popped into my head, a way to involve the community that, and I think we've done something like this before, so I'm not sure. This isn't a new idea by any means, but like a quarantine time capsule might be really funny, like a COVID nineteen time capsule where we ask the patrons to say like, what do you think we should put in?
That's great.
In the box to represent what we've all been through in the last year. I mean, obviously, we gotta put some toilet paper there. We gotta put some wine in there.
And we could actually have people vote on the submissions, you know?
Yeah, that might be, and again, I get that it's like chaos upon chaos, and you guys have a lot going on, but in terms of like ways to really get the community energized, that might be something that would be really fun and kind of almost not making light of it, but just a way to commemorate, I mean, and how fun would that be in fifty years for people to open it up too, you know?
That'd be fun in ten years. That would be fun in twenty twenty-one. It's over.
Too close.
I realize this time, but.
I think I have a family Christmas project. I love the idea of a time capsule. I really haven't heard of that, but oh my gosh, that is fantastic.
That's nice.
That could be fun. We could even have an art project, like to send to people out, hey, you know, what would your time capsule look like? You know, and and have people draw, scan, and then post it on the website somehow, how people are dealing with COVID nineteen.
That's a good idea. All right, Kelly, can I follow up with you on that tomorrow in regards to Cheryl and everything else?
You know, I just, just came to mind, did we ever figure out how we're going to handle curbside pickup in the wintertime? I know we talked about that.
We're, we're trying to keep it outside as long as we can. We might have to end up getting, like, putting it into the lobby. But for right now, we're, we're trying to avoid that simply because, you know, we, it is, it is, you know, possible to have them come into the lobby. It's just one of those things where once you get them inside the building, how do you maintain it? How do you keep it clean? You know, what happens when they want to get elsewhere inside the building? You know, and who who's monitoring that situation? You know, like, at this point, it's, it's easy for us, and while we keep keeping the doors closed, you know, everybody's still on the outside. But yes, once, once snow starts accumulating and we get some truly, you know, rough winter weather out there, then yes, we're gonna have to start moving people inside.
We talked a bit about, I thought we did, about plastic sheeting or something that could go just from the overhang that so they can walk in one side and walk right through to the other side. I I don't know, it'll keep the snow away, I guess, but I don't know.
Yeah, we're, let me put it this way, we're, 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 we're thinking, well, you know, as far as, as far as, you know, trying to weatherize that area, you know, I can certainly have Dimitri look into that. I do think that in the, in the, in the short term, though, you know, you know, if we have it so that it's outside a majority of the time, you know, and then we bring them in only during those situations where it's absolutely necessary for the materials to be not exposed to the elements, then, you know, we we have it, we have a situation where we can easily maneuver the material in inside and outside of the building as necessary. You know, I don't know if if plastic sheeting is going to work. I mean, we would have to have it weighted or, you know, some serious I mean, we would have to have it weighted or, you know, some serious tarps that are actually going to be able to maintain, you know, if there is a good amount of, of wind, then I don't know if it's just gonna blow all over the place. The wind has been bad enough that the, the sign holders that we have on the outside of the building continue to get toppled over, get thrown into the middle of a parking lot. And that, that's, that tells me that, you know, we're, we're probably looking at, it would probably be better just to bring the materials inside the front lobby and then managing it from in there instead.
We might have to institute appointments. And in other words, things are kept inside until you're gonna be there at 1:30. You give people a 10-minute, 15-minute, they'll slow things down, but this means you're gonna keep running in and out all the time. People drive up and pick it up and then.
Bridgeport does that. A friend told me they went to the North End Library in Bridgeport and they had requested a book. They were told a specific time that they needed to come into the lobby with their mask. And there was a woman sitting in the lobby who, before you went any further, asked your name. And then the book was placed at certain areas and they said to go to the, to section B or section A, but you had a specific interval and you were checked in in order to come in. And it was only one at a time allowed to come in, so. But I don't know what their volume is, you know, at the library in terms of what they, you know, we've got a lot of, like you said, there was a lot to put out on curbside by yourself today, so I don't know if that'll work either, but.
Well, right now people have, have the full time span, however the hours are. The only way we can really handle that, I think, is to take the pressure off of Stefan and his staff is to make it more incumbent upon the people who want to get the books to be here at a certain time. It's, they, they help us, we help them.
That's something, that's something to think about.
There, there are also working hours to consider for people who are not available until after work or evening. So that's a little tricky. You're gonna have to fill that in as well.
True.
Easy for us retired people to say, come at a certain time.
They could also find a surrogate to do it for them. Most people can, can do that, I would think.
Well, things that Stefan can bounce around with the staff to see what will work. What's gonna work. Okay, anything else before we go into old business?
I'll just say, I'll just add one more comment. There might be fewer requests for book pickups as the weather gets worse. You know, people might not want to drive in the sleet or the snow or the ice or, so that might change. It might adjust downward. Or they know they're gonna get snowed in, it could adjust upward. I guess we don't really know until it.
Go either way, that's right.
In my experience, they, they, they probably put the items on hold when they're at home and it is sleeting outside. And then they come the next day. So, you know, the, it, it tends to, I don't think that they're expecting to have less of volume in terms of the amount of material that they put on hold. But yeah, they probably don't want to go and pick it up and went in the middle of bad weather. I don't know. I will say, we did try to do the buy appointment model before. That was actually the very first curbside model that we had. We tried that for a good two weeks until we really couldn't maintain it anymore simply because of the sheer amount of volume that we do get in terms of items placed on hold. We, we, you know, even now, we have a good 1,000 items that are regularly on the book, book, book pick list. And, you know, the staff are picking up and putting out into bags for people. I, I can, you know, as I said, you know, for right now, we're just hoping for good weather, at least for the time being. I will, you know, get in touch with Dimitri and see if there's anything that he really can think of that's going to work in terms of weatherizing the, the overhang area. We only had two times in the last six months since we've been doing this that we really fell afoul of bad weather. And that was obviously during Hurricane, the remnants of Hurricane Isaiah that came in. And then the, what was it, two weeks ago? When we had that bad storm and we ended up having to bring it, it was like right before Thanksgiving. And we ended up having to bring everything inside.
Right.
But, you know, that made it easy because we were still open to the public. But now you are not so lucky.
Right, right. All right, um, things to still consider. It's, it's evolving and changing as we speak. Nothing you can do about it, really. Okay, old business, nominating committee, got together, we have a slate. Who wants to take over Tara or Nancy?
Tara. I can do it if you want. Or Nancy, do you want to? Whatever.
Yeah, I thought you were gonna do it.
Yes, I will, absolutely. Um, so we got together and we spoke to people and we took suggestions. And we decided that we would like to propose the same slate that we currently have. So that would be Rosemary Seaman as our chairperson, Carol as our vice-chairperson, and John as our treasurer.
All right. So from here, we, all those approve, vote approve?
Well, there, yep, you have to ask for a motion to approve.
Motion.
I move that we approve the slate as presented by Tara.
Okay, you have a second?
I second.
Thank you, Julia. All right. Any questions? Any discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? Abstentions? All right, congratulations, team. We're another year. Let's hope we can meet in person in the next year though, so it's not so.
Right.
That's the thing. All right, um, new business, anything? I, I, I have one thing, it's kind of awkward, awkward to bring it up, but I'm not certain how many of you realize, John had some surgery. And I did not expect him to be back today, but I am glad he's here. Not that I'm not happy. I am happy he's here. But John, we were gonna discuss today a gift for you because of you having your surgery and we needed board approval, so we, I guess, you know, what I need to know is, is are we all in favor? Would we like to? Who can say no at this point? This is so awkward. I'm not certain how to do this.
Well, maybe we can ask John if he has any, any special needs for, you know, the surgery's upcoming, is that correct?
He had it.
Oh, had it.
He had it. Had it and he's Superman. He came back here.
So what, what would he, what would he benefit from? Homemade cookies?
I'm so impressed that you want to do something. Nothing is really required if necessary. I've just managed to express that your, your compassion for me and, and hope for recovery, which is coming along well. So that's, your, your expression of good, good will is enough for me. Thank you. I received my gift.
Are you sure? We could get you some dinner or something.
Yeah, make some meal, John.
Or make you something.
A gift, yeah, a gift certificate to a restaurant that you know, that we know delivers as well. And that's what I was thinking initially. And that's what I was gonna explore with everyone today, tonight.
If I'm through with business here, I could chime off, but I could, I don't, I said, it's really not necessary, but thank you so much for thinking of it. It is awkward. What, what do we do now? But that being said, I, I, I guess there's anything more than I would participate, much more in the meeting, huh? Should I just chime off and I could, I can't, I can't mute my, I can't take myself in another meeting, can I?
I, I, I don't know Robert's rules. This, this is all brand-new stuff.
Well, there's really no rules. It's really more that we want to, you know, do. I don't think there's Robert's rules worried. It's just.
No, he wants to mute off.
Oh, well, I think, isn't the meeting basically over? I think he could probably just leave unless we have, do we have anything else of substance that we're gonna discuss?
I don't. Does anybody have anything else? Nope, no.
Well, that is, I was making, but once again, thank you so very much.
All right, John. All right.
Happy holidays, John. Happy holidays.
Bye, John. Feeling better? Bye, John.
That's 2021. We'll get this god-awful 2020 behind us. And that's all we could hope for. So good luck to all of you. I guess, how do I get out of here? But I'll do that.
Should be a leave button. Bottom right corner. Bottom right corner's leave.
Au revoir. Happy Hanukkah and all of those things.
Is he out? No, he's not. He's still with us.
He's still there.
Bottom right corner.
I hit it once.
Okay, there we go.
All right.
So I know, I know John's daughter.
Yes.
I know John's daughter that lives in town, so I could ask her like, which is, which is his favorite restaurant? And let you know, and then we could make the arrangements to have food delivered from, with that. That's great. Do you want me to do that?
Yes, Kelly, and you know, Kelly, I'm also, I'm gonna be leaving to go, hopefully, if the weather cooperates, on Wednesday to go up to New Hampshire with my family to, you know, I had a table for one for Thanksgiving, so I figured I'm gonna go up there and quarantine for two weeks.
Yes.
Goes on and come back after January. So if we agree that we would like to get him, which I, I guess there should be a motion, and, and how much to spend.
And the amount, right, that's it.
Well, I have a question. Does, does anyone know how many people live in John's household?
One.
He lives by himself.
By himself.
Okay, so let's get him at least two or three meals, right? Stefan, John just reported we're having a great year in our portfolio.
Just, just for reference sake.
What would we do with that?
When John had his, what was it, the knee surgery?
Yeah.
Voted, and we gave him a $50 gift certificate for a restaurant. So I'm, just as a guideline.
That seems reasonable.
So.
This $50 would be able to get him, as you said, Carol, maybe a couple of different meals, maybe probably three meals depending on the restaurant and have stuff for a while.
Right.
Yeah.
So may I have a motion to?
I make a motion that we, we get a $50 gift certificate to a local restaurant for John, for his convalescence.
Okay. Do I have a second?
I second it.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? And abstentions? Okay.
So is Kelly going to be in charge of this and how would she get reimbursed? Will she refer to Louis to take care of it once she finds out the restaurant name?
Right, I think that's.
I think Kelly would go out and do that and then give the receipt to Louis for reimbursement.
Okay, easy peasy.
If that's okay with you and, and, you know, we're depending on where his daughter suggests, get a menu too at the same time. So he's got everything there. Julia?
Just realized, we haven't, maybe you did this last meeting. Was there a Christmas discussion?
Yes.
Yes, I missed it in the minutes. Okay.
Yes.
I'll quickly update everyone and say that gift cards are on their way. They haven't been distributed yet. It took a while to organize everything with all the people figuring out what gift card they wanted, but it is, that is.
So Stefan, I think we should all thank you for doing this, for you and Louis and who was the one who really implemented it. It's very time-consuming and.
That's not a problem. It's more, more, more just like hounding people to get back to me because they don't respond to their emails. But yeah, aside from that, I know it's easy. Quick question in regards to the, the motion, who seconded it?
Carol. Carol did. And Kelly, thank you very much for taking this.
Sure, no problem.
Okay, anything else?
And Stefan, do, do you want one of us to take the minutes every, so that you don't have to do it every time?
To be honest, right now, it makes more sense for me to do it simply.
Okay.
And route everything through the town. At some point, yes, I'd like somebody else to take care of it.
Is Judy ever coming back to do the minutes or is she not doing it because she's been ill or?
She doesn't have very good internet connection at her house. And we've talked about it before, but it's not gonna happen.
Is she doing all right physically with her recuperation?
It's still ongoing.
Well, I think you should say hello. Maybe we should give her holiday greetings from the board as well.
I will tell you that you, I will tell her that, that, that you, you are all worth thinking of.
Great, thank you.
Okay. Anything else? If there's no other business, I want to obtain a motion to adjourn the meeting?
Make a motion to adjourn.
Who's seconds?
I'll second.
Thanks, Nancy. All right, everybody, this has been quite a year going through this. And team, we're ready for another year, John and Carol and I, on Zoom.
Better year.
Okay.
Gotta get better, right?
Good Christmas, Hanukkah.
Happy Hanukkah, Carol.
Bye, everyone.
Happy holidays, everybody.